City Hall in the 21st State Senate District. This is the public hearing on reapportionment for Peter Bridgeport. And we do thank Mayor Loretty from the city of Shelton and the people of Shelton who opened up their City Hall for this hearing. Before we call anybody to come up and testify, is there any members who would like to make any comments or remarks? Representative Perillo.
Thank you, Senator. Just very simply welcome to the 133rd District. We're happy to have her over here. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I'll also just say, express my gratitude to the city of Shelton for hosting us today. We thought it was important for this committee to ensure that we were doing regional public hearings, one in southeastern Connecticut, one in southwestern Connecticut, and one in north-central Connecticut, to make sure that folks had an opportunity to address the committee in person. Tomorrow, we'll be doing our first Zoom hearing for the committee, for a committee and commission ever. And so tomorrow, a testimony can be submitted to the committee via Zoom. You can sign up by going to the reapportionment committee's website. A sign up has already begun, and my understanding is we have about 45 people already signed up for tomorrow's public hearing by Zoom. And then last thing I'll just say prior to this is that even after our public hearings have concluded, the committee and the subsequent commission will accept input from members of the public in terms of what the map should look like. You can do that by submitting through the email address that's set up on our website. And you can use a lot of these third-party tools that are available nowadays. Redistricting.org is one. Redistricter.org is another. Take out the ER, just put an R at the end. It's, you know, very trendy. And you can, you can use those tools to draw maps that you can subsequently submit to the committee or the commission for their consideration. And we welcome that kind of input. So, thank you very much for being here today, and we look forward to hearing your testimony today. And we look forward to people testifying tomorrow and receiving your submissions if you so choose. Thank you.
The first speaker of this afternoon is Mark Garofalo.
Or good afternoon, members of the committee, especially to Representative Perillo. I hope you caught the same amount of traffic that I did on the way over here. So, thank you very much for your consideration, Senator and our representatives. My name is Mark Garofalo. I'm the town clerk in the city of Derby. I'm here before you to present testimony of a resolution that was adopted by the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen in November of 2020. Whereas, the city of Derby is the smallest city in terms of areas in entire state of Connecticut. And whereas, since the implementation of one person, one vote for equal representation after the 1965 Connecticut Constitutional Convention, the city of Derby has been split into at least two or three different state representative and state senate districts. And whereas, being a small part of several districts does not serve the citizens of Derby well as their voice is diluted by the number of districts of which we are apart. And whereas, the state of Connecticut will redraw the state legislative district lines in 2021 following the decennial census. And whereas, the citizens of Derby deserve a unified voice with clarity, a vision on the issues that are important to the city of Connecticut's smallest city. Now therefore, the Board of Aldermen, Alderwomen of the city of Derby hereby resolves the following: that the city of Derby, with enthusiastic bipartisan support, request the state of Connecticut redistricting committee adopt a 2021 redistricting plan to include the city of Derby in only one state representative district and only one state senate district. Number two, that the city of Derby strongly urges our newly elected and re-elected state legislative delegation to support this request and encourages them to work in a bipartisan effort to effect this much-needed change for the fair and equitable representation of the city of Derby and its residents. And three, that the legislative delegation will represent us in the 2021-2023 General Assembly will keep the city of Derby updated as to the status of this initiative. It was adopted on the 19th day of November 2020. So, I present that, and it provided copies for the committee. I also have submitted the testimony of the chair of the Derby Democratic Town Committee, who was on vacation, Analo Di Malerba, where the Derby Democratic Town Committee did unanimously endorse the support of this resolution by the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen. And I did present my own presentation as town clerk because this also impacts our elections. It increases the cost of our elections to have three legislative districts, including the absentee ballots. So, we appreciate your consideration in this most difficult project, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mark. Are there any questions?
Not a question, but just a comment. I just wanted to make sure that if you have written testimony that you haven't submitted through the committee email address, please provide it to the clerk. We'll make sure that it becomes part of the public record that's publicly available on our website. And I appreciate that consideration. That would be, that's helpful to the committee and to the subsequent commission.
I have done that with all three. Thank you very much, members of the committee.
And just because he mentioned traffic, I realize I had to, I may mention the fact that Representative Exum is on her way. She just emailed, texted me and said that she would be a few minutes late, but she'll be right in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, Sujata Gadkar Wilcox.
Thank you. Good afternoon, to members of the reapportionment committee. I'm Sujata Gadkar Wilcox. I'm director-at-large for the League of Women Voters of Connecticut and associate professor of legal studies at Quinnipiac University. I appreciate very much the opportunity to make comments at a public hearing about the important issue of reapportionment. Our democracy is fragile, and what puts our democratic ideals most in danger is public apathy, which comes from cynicism about the political process. A recent Pew Research poll found that only a bare majority of Americans, 55%, believe that ordinary citizens can influence their government. That was down seven percentage points from 2016. Pew also found that 67% of Americans believe that most politicians are corrupt. This cynicism is dangerous, and it erodes the pillars of our democracy. As a teacher and scholar of constitutional law, I frequently hear concerns about the integrity of our political system in the voices of my students. If voters believe that the political system lacks transparency, and they cannot raise their voices to effect meaningful change, they will not become educated on the key issues facing our state and will not be the active participants in our government that we need them to be to have a healthy democracy. We must restore public trust in government. Reapportionment is a foundational constitutional requirement, but it also gives rise to concerns about the public's ability to have a meaningful voice in their government. People feel this process with suspicion, worried that it may reflect that their representatives are choosing their voters rather than their voters choosing their representatives. Even though Connecticut has a bipartisan process for reapportionment, the fact that this process is a political one rather than being handled by an entirely independent commission already makes it suspect in the minds of voters. Given this fact, transparency is critical. During this period, it's crucial to educate Connecticut citizens on our procedures, and particularly on the commission's bipartisan character, to ensure as much faith in the process as possible. The commission should educate citizens on the process through mailers and the media, seek meaningful input, including after draft maps have been produced, offer sufficient time for public comment prior to final decisions being made, incorporate substantive aspects of the public comment into the final maps, and make all deliberations of the public commission accessible. Thank you so much for all of your hard work on behalf of Connecticut residents.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Thank you very much. Next is Rhonda Caldwell.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this public comment here in Shelton. I am Rhonda Caldwell from Hampden, actually now I live in Hampden, Connecticut. We are a group of concerned citizens around voting and making sure everyone is having their votes heard and their voices heard. So, I just wanted to say, I really wanted, I really enjoyed a year from Quinnipiac, which is cool, but just like right around the corner from us. You know, I really agree with the things that you said today because we're coming here, Hampden, actually now, and myself are coming here to say that we're really concerned about the public comment period process. You know, we're standing in a room inside of a building in the middle of a pandemic at 1 o'clock in the afternoon on a workday. That makes it very hard for people to try to get here. And I understand when you opened up the meeting, you said that this was for the Bridgeport community, so I was wondering why it wasn't held in Bridgeport. So, these are the questions that we have to ask ourselves about public comment. And, you know, we have to start to reimagine what our democracy looks like here in Connecticut and in our country. You know, we have to look at public comment as really trying to engage and educate voters on these processes because they're vitally important to our communities. It cannot continue to be looked at just as a legislative obligation. You know, you know, over the course of the last 12 or 18 months, our whole world has been changed and uprooted because of this pandemic. We've had to learn how to use Zoom. We've had to learn how to do things virtually. And I just want to encourage everyone here today, educating the process, the voters on this process is vitally important. I really didn't even know about these hearings until a friend called me and said, "Did you understand that you missed the first two hearings? There's one today, and I think there's a virtual one." We didn't even really know how to sign up. Mailers, websites, spend the money to educate the people and really engage the public in this process. You know, I have a friend who's here today who ran for state senate in the 17th district. And we thought it was very interesting that, I live in Hampden, the 17th district included Hampden, a small portion of New Haven, and then the Valley. Very, I mean, again, who made that decision to say that these communities, which are very different, were being represented in that, when those lines were driven and drawn? It was very interesting to us. I also text my senator, who I think is one of the best in Connecticut, no offense, Senator Martin Mooney, and I asked him, "How do I even get on the reapportionment commission?" And he gave me a really great answer. And again, it was something I wasn't even aware of what the process was. And again, that's troubling because understanding who your representation is, how the lines are drawn, and how you're representing, and like what is the demographic in those lines? You know, what is the economic, the social, the racial makeup? It's vitally important that people need to know this. You know, apportionment and districting is a very big part of hearing the voices of the people and having the representation, us being able to select our representation. So, again, I want to encourage everybody today, and I, you know, don't want to take up too much more time preaching because I know you all hear us, but in closing, I just want to say, our legislation and the process has to really truly envision engaging the public, and don't be afraid of it. You know, don't, don't try to say, you know, we have to do these public hearings, you know? Look at it as something that is positive. And we, in order to really achieve a true democracy, you have to have the people involved. Okay? So, I really want to encourage everybody with that today, and I look forward to trying to figure out this process a little bit more myself. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Representative Kendall Orr.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond, I don't so much have a question, and I appreciate the point you've made. We struggled to try to get public hearings put forth, and the reason why it's not in Bridgeport is the City Hall, it didn't feel comfortable having it there, but it certainly was an area that we looked to have these hearings. And while ideally having them during the day isn't perfect, it was at times that we were able to schedule. We do have the virtual hearings, and just to reiterate, I think as the chairman said before, we have our website where you could submit your written, any type of written testimony. That is ongoing, so even though these hearings are ending tomorrow, it doesn't mean that the public cannot submit written testimony at any time, and this process will continue on for the next couple of months. Thank you.
Yes, I also want to echo, you know, I would have rather had this in the city of Bridgeport. It is the state's largest community, and we endeavored to do that, but unfortunately, there weren't any public spaces that were available to the committee. Be that as it may, people can still participate and, you know, use those interactive tools. I think it's very interesting. It's something we haven't had in the past. 10 years ago, we had one computer with one printer that would do maps at the state Capitol. Now, people can actually go in and virtually use the data and those tools. It's davesredistricting.org and redistricter.org. Those are two interactive tools, and it also allows the individuals to create their own maps. So, they'll see how to do it and the challenges that we have to commit. But thank you very much for your insight. The next individual is Justin Farmer.
Good afternoon, representatives and senators. Thank you for putting this on. My name is Justin Farmer. I am a city councillor in Hampden. I first just want to thank you all for your work on prison gerrymandering and making sure that we, as a state, are respecting everyone's bodies and everybody's voices in the election process. We do a redistricting every decade, right? There's going to be demographic changes. There's things that we have to think about, traffic, schools, funding, and community members' first need and where their needs need to be met, and what we can do for our limited resources. So, I first just want to thank you all for that. I've lived through two redistrictings. The next time, I will be 37, I will be doing a redistricting. And I just want to stress some of the comments that Ms. Caldwell made before about using us on the local level to really be partners, to better educate people, and to share information and to get things out. A lot of us go through an election cycle not learning these things, and once it comes to us, we're always in a rush and a panic. And I think there could be a better partnership with this reapportionment commission to really think of ways of engaging the local municipalities, to really take charge and think about how redistricting should be done, especially when it comes to regionalization, as towns working together and thinking about how they can collaborate, or what community members they share. So, I just wanted to share that perspective. Again, Bridgeport is our largest community in our state, and those demographics aren't going to change. The top 10 are probably going to be the top 10 as long as Connecticut exists. I think it's up to us to figure out how we respect the cities as well as our suburbs and rural communities to really highlight how we, as Connecticut, can work together. The very last thing I'll say is that I appreciate that this is a bipartisan process. That's not true in our state. I think, as the professor said earlier, we need people to buy into our democracy. We need people to believe that this system actually works. So, I thank you all and look forward to working in partnership with you all so that we really educate and get everybody involved. So, thanks again.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you very much. The next individual is Vanessa Lyles.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the reapportionment committee. My name is Dr. Vanessa Lyles, and I'm here today to testify as a Bridgeport voter, representing my organization, PT Partners, a grassroots resident-led community organizing nonprofit that aims to rebuild community and PT barn compartments in all housing in Bridgeport, low-income public housing in Bridgeport. So, I'm here representing, I'm also here representing the Unbrigged Bridgeport Coalition, a broad-based coalition working to fix Bridgeport's broken democracy. Once drawn, our electoral maps determine how we're represented in the government for the next 10 years. This means all state and local decisions on health care, jobs, the environment, education, and more must be based on maps that are drawn fairly and accurately, with all voices considered and equitably represented. In June of 2019, however, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in Rucho versus League of Women Voters of North Carolina that no fair test exists for courts to determine when partisan gerrymandering has gone too far. As a result, federal courts will be hands-off during this redistricting process, even when new district lines are drawn, to intentionally decrease the voting power of voters based solely on their political party. Unfortunately, in Bridgeport, we know all too well how it feels to be disenfranchised as our city's democracy has been hijacked to ensure those with power keep it. We know firsthand that democracy dies when partisan players are allowed to make decisions in the dark. The General Assembly must establish much better transparency requirements for redistricting. The National Organization Represent Us, which fights to end corruption in federal government, assesses the threat of partisan gerrymandering in Connecticut as high, largely because of the absence of robust transparency measures. Due to this lack of transparency, voters are in the dark about how districts are drawn. State legislative districts must be within 10% of the ideal population average, which is the state population divided by the number of districts for each body, 36 for the state senate and 151 for the state house. Some districts exceed the ideal when some are below the ideal, yet no one knows how or why this happens. Finally, when maps are developed, the public should know what considerations, in addition to federal requirements and geographic contingency, have been used to create districts. The public should know what conversations have you been having internally about redistricting? What concerns have you all raised among yourselves? Therefore, in solidarity with the League of Women Voters, we believe the best way to conduct redistricting is through independent, nonpartisan special commissions made up of groups and individuals that are representative of the communities where districts are drawn. Voters should choose their representatives rather than legislators choosing their voters. On behalf of the Unbrigged Bridgeport Coalition and Bridgeport voters, we ask you today the following questions. Will you introduce state legislation this year to create greater redistricting transparency? Will you publicly release your decision-making process into which districts will be above and which will be lower than the ideal population? And last, will you publicly release what considerations, in addition to federal requirements and geographic contingency, you are using to create all districts? And last, Connecticut's redistricting process is largely a game of insider ball. The long-term strategy we must amend our constitution to, is we must amend our constitution to remove elected officials from the central role they play. However, it is possible for you, the Decennial Connecticut Reapportionment Committee, to lead now on the issues of transparency, accountability, fairness, and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next individual is Kim Healy.
Do I talk into this one? No. Okay. So, good afternoon, esteemed members of the reapportionment committee. My name is Kim Healy, and I'm a resident of Wilton, Connecticut. My husband and I moved to Connecticut in 1994, and we moved to the city of Norwalk, where we lived for 15 years. We were part of the, a very residential district called the Six Taxing District, but for state purposes, the representative seat was incorporated into the town of Darien, where the representative lived, and so, I guess, sorry, the point was that, you know, we felt well-represented being that we were all in a similar residential-type, village-type place. We moved to 2008, and at that time, and until 2018, we had the good fortune to have both our state senator and our state representative live right in town. We would meet them often at public events, at church, the grocery store, or just about town. They were our neighbors. They shared our state priorities. Wilton's surrounding towns of Darien, New Canaan, Westport Bridgefield, all have representatives who live in their town, whose top priority is the interests of the residents of their own towns. So, Wilton used to have its own town representative, but it was broken up due to typical gerrymandering considerations rather than what is best for the town of Wilton. And according to the Connecticut Constitution, Article 3, Section 4, it states, "For the purpose of forming assembly districts, no town shall be divided except for the purpose of forming assembly districts wholly within the town." The needs of Wilton and Norwalk are vastly different. Both municipalities deserve to be served appropriately and with dedicated representation, whose job it is to make the town or city his or her absolute top priority. I ask that you redraw the lines to have Wilton wholly within one representative district with a portion of one of our surrounding towns to make up the difference. Thank you so much for the work you do and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next person is Tom O'Day.
Chairman Kelly, Chairman Nadad, my name is Tom O'Day, members of the committee, excuse me. My name is Tom O'Day, state representative for the 125th district, which includes part of Wilton and most of New Canaan. I come here to testify on behalf of my constituents, particularly those in Wilton, but also in New Canaan, to protect the towns and have them have their own representative. As Ms. Healy just testified or spoke, Wilton used to have both its senator and state rep from Wilton. It was about, that was five years ago. Couple facts. Since the last census, Wilton's population grew from 18,062 to 18,503. Wilton is the largest municipality without a resident senator or state rep, as I understand it, and Wilton is the largest municipality split into multiple districts, none of which are 50% or more of the district. Those are two very important stats, I believe, that should be given your consideration. And so, I was going to cite the Connecticut Constitution, but since Ms. Healy already did that, I will not restate what the Constitution says, but it is unfair for the residents of Wilton to be split up the way they have been split up. And I would also like to state that New Canaan's democratic, former Democratic registered voters said to me at a 9/11 event, "Make sure New Canaan is not split up like Wilton is." And so, I wanted to reiterate that for everyone here, that both New Canaan and Wilton believe they should have a resident representative up in Hartford. And I do love representing Wilton. It's very similar to New Canaan, but I feel compelled to state what my constituents in Wilton want, is that is a more vocal representative. Norwalk is also a fantastic municipality, but it's very different in makeup than Wilton. And so, Wilton is represented by a Norwalk resident and a New Canaan resident, and hasn't been represented by a Wilton resident in either the House or the Senate, like I said, for about five years. So, unless there are any questions, I will submit some written testimony, but happy to answer any questions anybody has here. Doris.
Questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
The next person is Monica Peterson.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Monica Peterson, and I'm a resident of Shelton. And I'm here today to ask you to keep the 4th congressional district of Greenwich to Bridgeport intact. As a longtime resident of Shelton, which is also in the 4th district, I know the importance of the interdependence of our towns and cities. I go to Bridgeport frequently for medical and business appointments, entertainment, and educational opportunities. Therefore, Bridgeport's challenges and successes impact my life. In addition, I commuted to work in Stanford every day for 15 years, so I needed to drive through Bridgeport or take a train that went through Bridgeport. I know from direct experience that we need to work as a unit to tackle transportation issues. As you mentioned earlier, one of your members couldn't make it down quite yet because of traffic concerns, so we, this is something that needs to have a regional approach. So, I thank you very much for your consideration. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. The next person is Betty Lynn Paez.
We're going lower. So, I'm a, I grew up in Connecticut, graduated from Shelton High School, couldn't wait to get out of here, and now I'm right back where I started. Couldn't wait to get out of here, and now I'm right back where I started. I lived in Fairfield. I owned a bakery in Bridgeport 30 years ago. It's all part of a unit to this point. But as I'm listening to everybody talking, you know, we're asking amateurs to do really what needs to be a professional job. And I think, looking at the redistricting, there are people, professionals, who draw maps without getting into the politics. I think that would go a long way to making people feel more comfortable that we are operating in a bipartisan way in this state. So I would urge you to look at the viability of doing that. Everybody's got a lot of interests, but we need to bring it together. And somebody who's kind of looking at it from 30,000 feet, birds don't see all the lines that we draw on a map. You know, we need the bigger picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next individual is John Schuzik.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is John Schfshik. I'm a selectman in the town of Durham. But I'm speaking here today as an individual, not for our entire board. I've been a selectman there since 2007, so I do think I have a deep knowledge on this issue. Durham's a small town, 7,500 residents, bordering North Branford, Madison, Guilford, Middletown, Middlefield, Kiligrewith, Adam, and Wallingford. Our sister town is Middlefield. We share a school district, a town planner, transfer station, et cetera. We were with Middlefield from 2002 to 2012, and the 100th, along with part of Middletown. We were separated the last redistricting in 2012. However, more than just that, we were split within our own town. So our small town of 7,500 was split in two in the House. However, we were also split in the Senate. So we were 7,500, split in the House, and split in the Senate after we were taken away from the town of Middlefield. We were also, they were two different districts. So they weren't split along the same way. So we had multiple districts, 7,500 people. So again, here we are, 7,500 people, different senate, different house, different districts within each of them. Here are the results, and I'll go over the pros and the cons. The cons: the cost of these extra voting districts were rather large, paying poll workers thousands of dollars, if not tens of thousands of dollars, over the decade. Confusion: many people didn't know what district they were in. Our registers did a great job of education, but it was still confusing, not knowing exactly what district they're in. Number three, another con: we didn't have any candidates for that whole decade. Not one candidate came out of Durham, not one major party candidate. In the previous, in 2010, we had a candidate in the House and the Senate. Before that, we had a candidate from the House in every election in the 2000s. Furthermore, which already been talked about, I maintain that for, it's against Article 15, Section 2 of the state constitution, "For the purpose of forming assembly districts, no town shall be divided except for the purpose of forming assembly districts wholly within that town." Now here are the pros. We've had four different representatives or senators at all times at the Capitol throughout the last decade. That is huge, and that's been a really, allows us for a lot of access for our board of selectmen, for our residents. And I sincerely thank, you know, Representative Candelaire, you're one of them. I don't think anybody could have done it better. Maybe Ray, rest in peace, or Ray Konoski, as some of you may have served with, who's from our town, he did a great job. But I think, Vinnie, you've done a phenomenal job not being from Durham. I don't think we could have gotten a better representative who doesn't live in town, so very receptive. We've also had Representative Kukuruda, we had Senator Fizano. We had really good, and I don't want to be overly partisan, Senator Meyer did a great job. And there's a few others I'm forgetting, there's Senator Cohen now. So we had a very, I'll be quick, sorry, I'll wrap this up. We did a, we've had a lot of access. I think it's, always having four representatives is huge. So there's a really big pro. So I know I talked a lot about the cons, but there's a lot of benefits too. So anyway, those are the pros and cons. Unlike Congress, you have the variance that can be between districts. I'm not here to say what's better or worse. I simply wanted to bring to your situation, bring to your attention, what happens when you split up a district so much? And like I said, there's a lot of good, there's a lot of bad. I can't tell you if our residents think it's better or worse. You'll hear different varying viewpoints between what residents you talk to, but it's better to be split up or not. So I'll just finish up with two final notes. We were split, actually, in Congress as well in the 2000s. We're right on the line. I know the population shift is going that way. We're right on the line from the second and the third. We were in the second and the third. Now we're wholly within the third. If we were split again and remained split in the House and the Senate, now if we were split in Congress, along with the House and the Senate, that could be overly problematic. So that's something I think we're a little bit worried about, is getting split again in that one. And finally, thank you all of you for serving. I mean, you're going to take criticism, no matter how you do these maps, and just like you do for your votes. But please know, there's a lot of residents out here that really appreciate your service, your willingness to serve, take away time from your families and your careers to serve the state, to serve your fellow residents. And again, I want to, you know, one more time, just thank Representative Candelaire. I think you've done a tremendous job. You're in the House, you have four different districts, four different towns in your district. But I think, not being from town, I can't speak highly enough about how you've been able to represent us over the last decade. So again, those are the pros and cons that I saw serving on the board. If you guys have any questions about any other pros and cons, please feel free to get ahold of me. And I do think we were a little unique in being split up in both. And maybe not the only town in Connecticut, but certainly, you know, under 10,000 that was split. But certainly probably one of, only a few that was split. Like I said, a small town being split in both. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Representative Kamaua.
I just, Nick, I do appreciate, John, your advocacy for the town of Durham. Certainly, I don't take this issue personally. It is, I know it has been a challenge for Durham, having three different voting districts. I think there's one district that has 100 voters in it. So your comments are well-taken and appreciated. Thank you for your advocacy.
Yeah, I think Representative Candelaire, I think I was, 10 years ago, a lot more upset when it first happened. It's like, what the heck is going on? But I think, like I said, that is a big pro that I think we saw over the course of a decade. So as much as some people don't like it, there is a pro of having four representatives up there for a small town, or two senators and two representatives. So, and again, thank you so much for what you've done for our community over the last decade. Great. Thank you guys very much.
The next speaker is Marcus Brown.
Good afternoon. Co-Chairman Kelly, Co-Chairman Haddad, members of the committee. My name is Marcus Brown, a lifelong Bridgeport resident, president pro temp of the Bridgeport City Council. And I just want to make it known that I'm here acting and speaking for myself and not the city council. I come before you today to provide testimony as you go through the tough process to fairly and impartially reapportion our great state. I want to speak to you today about Bridgeport and its position in the 4th Congressional District. For as long as I can remember, even when Connecticut had six congressional seats, Bridgeport has always been a part of the 4th Congressional District. Bridgeport remains, even with the updated census data, the largest city by population in Connecticut. In considering whether Bridgeport should be removed from the 4th Congressional District, the Commission should take into account a few important points. First, as I said before, Bridgeport has been a part of the 4th Congressional District, even when we had six congressional districts. As a result, Congressman Himes has been extremely familiar with the many challenges of the city of Bridgeport and has always been a great representative for us in Washington. Bridgeport, being Connecticut's largest city and a city with a lot of issues, we need to have someone who knows our city, someone who's familiar with the problems going on in Bridgeport and is ready and willing to address them. If we are removed from the 4th Congressional District, we run the risk of starting fresh with someone who is less familiar with Bridgeport and its challenges. Second, when creating congressional districts, it matters what cities you put together. You inherently are having large cities like Bridgeport and possibly New Haven compete for the attention of your congressional representatives. This affects the money that the cities need back in the district, and we are very concerned about that possibility. Third, trends from the pandemic have shown an influx of New Yorkers to the state of Connecticut, specifically Fairfield County. The greater Bridgeport area has been a beneficiary of this changing demographic, and it underscores Bridgeport's place as part of the greater New York metropolitan region. I think it is wise that Bridgeport and its leadership focus on Bridgeport's nexus with New York City, which includes the greater Stanford-Norwalk area. That kind of coordination and regional thinking can be better facilitated if Bridgeport remains a part of the 4th Congressional District with the rest of Lower Fairfield County. In sum, the success of the state of Connecticut is closely tied with the success of its largest city, Bridgeport. Whatever you do, please be sure to keep the best interests of Bridgeport in mind as you seek to change the lines for Connecticut's congressional districts. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to agree with him. I think he makes some very good points.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak? Sure, come step to the microphone and state your name.
Thank you to the co-chairs. Thank you to this whole committee. My name is Mitch Bolinsky. I am the state representative for the 106th District, which covers Newtown, Sandy Hook. I have to tell you that I have not disagreed with a single word that any of the prior speakers have said there. All touched on little nuances of the concept of representation of a district in beautiful ways, even though there's little bitty differences. From my perspective, Newtown and I are relatively unique for what I would consider to be a small town. As a small town, we're geographically large, so we have a population of about 28,000. I am privileged to serve Newtown as a single-town representative, but also to have a partner in Monroe and a partner in Bethel Danbury that absorb 3,000 and 1,000 of the residents on the corners of Newtown so that we have a legislative team in addition to our single senator, Senator Wong of 28th. The perspective I'd like to share is one of incredible support for, you know, the comments that have been made about the continuity and the contiguous nature and the need to serve the citizens of the district in a very home-based manner. So I'm fortunate enough to live in my district, serve my district, and when it comes time for special needs for our district, I think every day that I'm a member of a team of four. The cloud that that brings with Senator Wong and I as the glue that holds it all together is unmatched. And the key to it is to look at the needs of the community rather than looking at the political motivations that might or might not go into redistricting. For instance, we're very fortunate to be represented on our southwest side by Representative Ali Brennan of the 2nd District. And therefore, we have true bipartisanship in the way we approach things and our contacts within the government, including access to the governor's office and commissions that allow us to represent the constituency that we are elected to do our best for in the most effective way possible.